Do a no contact curb side pickup and then deliver supplies to all of our providers. In terms of ongoing support for our staff, we continue to host weekly staff meetings and have small drawings. We call them what's up Wednesdays. We meet every Wednesday. And our communications team continues to provide weekly events. We've taken pictures of our pets, our breakfasts, our homemade masks, and this week we'll be taking pictures of our stress relief or self-care activities. We of course continue to offer enhanced pay for all of our forward-facing staff such as our nurses and our liaisons that work in the jails as well as our access team. And continue to encourage people to take their breaks, their lunch break breaks during the day and host team meetings that are video as much as possible so we can remain connected. So with that, I'm going to switch it back over to Anya who's just going to wrap it up with any ongoing barriers that we might be experiencing.
Okay, so just ongoing challenges, I would say the most recent challenges we've had are really just the ability to potentially quarantine individuals if they're not necessarily presumptive positive or positive, but if they've been have potential exposure. So we've been lucky enough to work with a few providers that have been willing to offer some resources and able to do that. And as we continue to work through those challenges, we're all very thankful at the way the provider network has come together just to support the people we serve and each other as a network. Outside of that, you know, I think everything else is going pretty well. We continue to have our weekly meetings as Nicole mentioned, and we're just working through any challenges that come up as they come up and just trying to make sure that we're making the best decisions we can for people receiving services. So with that, we can take any questions. Oh, I do see one. Malkaya asks, has there been any discussions with providers about supporting staff in the core agencies? So Malkaya, are you referring to the enhanced compensation or in a different way? So just to answer the first part, if it is in fact related to the enhanced compensation, that is for any staff that is still forward-facing. So that does include the core providers. So we discussed that with them last week when we met and they were part of the provider bulletin that went out. So if that doesn't answer your question, let me know.
Anya?
Yeah?
No, that's not where I was going with that question. It came to my attention last week that someone was having a conversation about social workers feeling a little, I don't want to call it isolated, but feeling like with all of the accolades that are going to the physical healthcare workers on the front line that are doing face-to-face work, that there's not enough support publicly being given to mental health providers that are doing face-to-face work right now, especially now that there's more people in the community experiencing anxiety. There's a greater demand for mental health support, but not all because there's no ticker tape parades, there's no police and fire going through the community celebrating mental health workers is where I'm going with this. And some of them are feeling like, you know, I don't want to say forgotten, but that their work is not as valued. And I know this is part of the stigma because we're like the stepchildren of the health system. But I brought it up at the executive board meeting with the association last week, and that's why I'm bringing it up here now to see if there's been any discussion about additional PR, additional conversations about the value of the work that's being done by our mental health professionals in the community as, you know, just letting them know that they're appreciated along with everybody else that's doing face-to-face work right now.
So I definitely think that's something we are doing and we are communicating with our providers. As far as other places, I can't necessarily speak to that. I know Dr. Lawson has pushed out several self-care type things to those workers and things like that. And we can certainly take that back and have Christine think about what might be some ways that we could make them feel appreciated because you are correct, the physical healthcare workers are definitely getting a lot of focus on their hard work and everything. And the people that are serving our network are definitely doing as hard of work as they are. Nicole, do you have anything to add?
The only thing I'd add to that is that Al Jansen from the department did bring that up. And it was our understanding that he drafted something for the governor to address and kind of provide that same level of accolades on one of her speeches. So I do think that the department is aware of that and actively trying to rectify that as well.
One other comment I'd like to make along those lines too is the transition from working to from the office to working at home. I can speak to my own personal experience. I thought I was going to be ecstatic about working from home, but it's not all it's cracked up to be. I'm fortunate, I have a room with a door I can close to have a certain amount of privacy, but I'm just wondering about accommodations for staff who may not have adequate, I don't know what to call it. You know, I talked to one peer and she was saying, well, I don't have an office space in my house. My house isn't that big. My workspace is a recliner chair with a table at the bottom of it, you know, and that was affecting her mental health. And here she's needing to support other people with their mental health. So that's another reason why I keep bringing this up because I'm not always sure that people who make decisions for workers are aware of some of the frustrations that we might have. I've had a horrible time with internet connection. I finally got another provider, but I couldn't even do decent face-to-face meetings, video chat meetings because people couldn't hear me and couldn't see me, you know, and that's not anything that your company can do anything about. But the frustration of trying to do work from home is, I'm just saying, and I don't know if I'm babbling right now, but that's just my own personal issue. And I just feel like all the support we can give people, even if it's, we know these aren't the best environments to try to work in right now, we'll support you as much as we possibly can under the circumstances, but just recognize it is not an easy situation, especially when you're talking about maintaining your mental health as well as supporting somebody else's mental health. That's a challenge.
Definitely. I do think that we certainly for our staff are trying to be as accommodating as possible when it comes to people working from home. And I do get the impression from the providers we've spoken to that they're, they're working with their staff just to work through any challenges and hopefully support their self-care and things like that during this time. I do see a couple of other things on the questions. A question from Eric Lindemeyer, have the providers been able to apply for the SBA 7A loans to cover employee wages for two months? So I know that some providers have, and one of the things that we have told providers is that when we move people to a cost reimbursed contract, one of the expectations is that Medicaid is always payer of last resort. So in doing that, that then requires them to reasonably go after any funding that's out there to offset those costs. So whether it be, you know, insurance coverage, or in this, in these cases, some of the federal funding that's out there. And so for many of them, not core providers specifically, but for residential providers or providers that are typically fee-for-service, this is very new to them because in, when they're paid fee-for-service, they don't have to deal with all of that because there's an assumption that's taken into account when you are building the rate. So that's something we're going to be working with them on just to make sure that they understand the expectation. We talked about it last week. And that just means they have to attempt to go after it. It doesn't, it doesn't mean we wouldn't cover their expenses if they don't get it. It just means that they have to show due diligence that they did try to get it. So hopefully that answers your question. And then Pat made a comment that it looks like the state is doing paid or maybe it's pro bono advertise advertising praising the frontline workers. To Malkaya's point, the state should make versions for provider frontline workers who are at risk during these stressful times. Yep, that's a good point. We can probably bring that up to them on, we have a meeting with them tomorrow. Maybe we can mention that to them. And then an additional comment from Pat, what is the line of communication to the state's communication decision-making to make this happen, makers to make this happen? So I know Christine tends to take over all communication type things. So I don't know, Christine, if you have anything in particular you'd want to, you'd want to add to that?
No, but I will double check with their communication directors with the department and just having any plans to recognize social workers and frontline mental health professionals as well. And they very well could be. I think they're releasing things in phases.
Okay, thank you. So then Sarah posted a question that said, I had a question posed to me regarding CARES Act for SSI or SSDI. Is there information on the OCHN website that can be, that can provide information to families regarding this? So we do have information on the CARES Act on our website. I believe there's a whole section related to that and some pretty good summaries and understanding just to bring it down to just the basic information on there. So hopefully that's helpful for anybody that is looking for it. It is on our website. All right, I don't see any more questions. So if there's no more questions, we can move on and go back to Judy.
Okay, I just want to double check. Is, are there any additional questions on item B? Okay, I don't hear any. We'll move on then to the finance and revenue update, Anya?
Sorry about that. I turned everything off, not realizing I was next. So the ongoing topic of our fiscal year 20 revenue is always entertaining. So the information we've learned, I think I mentioned it last, last meeting, but if not, make sure to mention it this meeting, is that the department has recognized that the rates they pushed out for fiscal year 20 were not resulting in the revenue being received that they expected. So if you recall, we got from the actuary that our organization should be receiving a 7.2% increase in revenue for fiscal year 20. And the entire state was starting to see, starting in October, the payments were nowhere near that. And so there were a lot of complications with the state system CHAMP that pushes out the payments relating to how those payments were pushed out. They changed a few things. They made some things capitation-based as opposed to fee-for-service. So there were a lot of changes this fiscal year that have impacted the money getting to us. So they've been working, continuously working, and we've been, had several meetings just trying to work out what exactly are the issues and how they're going to resolve them. So the result is they did do amended rates, and we discussed with them if possible that we would like the lump sum payment for the year to date that's owed to us, just from a cash flow perspective for all of us. Everyone's in the same boat on this one. And they have agreed that in April, the capitation payment will include an additional $50 million to the system that will be the year-to-date owed based on the rate adjustment. So we, if I were to estimate based on our portion of that money, we should see somewhere between $3 to $4 million from that adjustment. And then we will have higher rates for the remainder of the fiscal year. So another thing that they're doing with the waiver, the 1135 waiver and appendix K is spend downs, once they're met as of March, will remain in place for the rest of the fiscal year. So people will not have to meet their spend down and will not fall off Medicaid each month. So they're doing that, I believe, I think they said either 60 days after the crisis ends until the end of the fiscal year. I'd have to check that to be sure. So that should help our capitation payments in that people will not fall off Medicaid. And if their Medicaid application is due during this time period, that will be extended. So essentially, no one falls off Medicaid or Healthy Michigan during this time period. So that should have an impact on our revenue throughout the rest of the fiscal year as well. What this doesn't totally solve is the issues we've seen with the habe waiver payments, where we have, I believe it's always been 862 slots, for lack of a better way to say it. And we got a few more this fiscal year, but we're still not getting paid for all of those. And the department has identified some issues which they're running independent scripts for each time they do a payment run. And what we're seeing is that we're still not getting, even with those independent scripts, we're still not getting the number of payments we should be. So we are regularly analyzing that and looking at what ones we're missing and sending that information to the state to continue to work out those details. And it just, it takes time. They've got their hands full over there. And they definitely are in agreement that we're missing money. And we are in continual communication with them about that and making sure that they understand if and when things are still not correct with what they're pushing out. That being said, does anybody have any questions I can answer related to funding?
I'm not sure if there's a lag in unmuting or if there are no questions.
I don't see any via the chat.
Well, I think then we'll take that as a complete presentation and we'll move on to our next item for the time being. We can always come back and board member comment if there's a question. So we'll move on to Patrick in the building update, please.
Hello, can you hear me now? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. This is the monthly building update is to provide the board with the monthly update on property at 5505 Corporate Drive, including potential tenants and the status of capital improvements. Right now, the board has suggested and requested that we review this monthly updates on tenants and capital improvements. I wanted to bring to your attention the last time we talked, I had mentioned to you that L. Mason Capitani was our new Realtor. They were awarded a contract from the RFP process. We currently have two deals that still pending with our former Realtor, which is Freedman Group. And there's, there are two tenants, two deals that's pending. OCHN is drafting a lease agreement for one of the tenants, which will be sent out this week. And the other, and that's for 7,500 square feet, seven-year lease for the second floor with a September, a tentative September scheduled move-in date. And then the second lease is, it's a signed lease. We already have a signed lease agreement from another tenant. This is for approximately 6,000 square feet. This is a 15-year lease, and it's a tentative move-in date for October 1 of this year. So we have one scheduled for September and the other one for October. The one scheduled, the signed lease that we have is a, is a provider that's in our network. The one that's not sent out yet is the, is the one that's out of our network. It took a little while because there was a few more details we had to improve for out-of-network tenant. And so that'll be sent out this week. We did want to mention that currently there is a ban on construction. And once the ban is lifted, we do have a signed contract or signed lease agreement, and construction work can begin. However, there's a preliminary work that's still going on, such as permits and preparing planning documents that's being done during this interim while the ban is still on actual construction work. So we do have a seven-year lease that hasn't been signed yet, but we do have a 15-year lease that is already signed and waiting for the ban to be lifted before we can start build out. OCHN has one signed lease from tenant one and expect one soon from tenant two. And both of these deals were brokered by our previous Realtor. They, they've continued to move forward with projects as projected. Once those deals are complete and finished, we'll have about 22,000 square feet of rentable space for our new Realtor, L. Mason Capitani. That'll be available for them to lease. We have been in contact with our new Realtor, but due to the pandemic and COVID-19 has limited our progress with our new Realtor. We were able to get a signed contract with them on March 19. And we have spoken, talked over the phone concerning marketing plans. And also, Capitani is using his downtime to start working on marketing plans. We sent floor plans to them. We sent interior and exterior photos. And so that way they're getting their marketing plan together during this interim timeframe. That's pretty much an update I have on the, on the tenant. There's no capital improvement update at this time. And that's all I have to report at this time.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions for Patrick?
This is Jonathan. Yes, I have a couple of questions. So if I've done the math, and if I remember correctly, Patrick, in past meetings, you've said that each floor is roughly 2900, 29,000 square feet, right?
Yes, that's correct. About 28.
28, okay. So that sounds like these two leases, if they take up space, are they going to be on the same floor? The ASE and ACH?
Well, I refrain from speaking of names because I'm not to put it out there because we technically not supposed to admit from them. So that's why.
Sorry.
So for tenant AMP, are they going to be on the same floors? Right now, no. One is on floor three, and that will complete the build out for the third floor. They'll be on the same floor with our current tenant, CHN. And then the other deal is on floor two. And that will, that would leave 18,000 square feet on floor two. And then it's additional 3,500 square feet on floor one.
Okay. Do we have, are you allowed to say what the rough per square foot revenue is for that? Or is that not until these are closed?
Well, we do have, we do have spreadsheets and the leasing agreement spells that information out. And if you'd like me to provide that to the board, we can. I mean, that's Anya's, that's her.
Yeah, I'm just sort of, I'm just curious only, yes, if you could, because I think I remembered it was like for the public retails, not retail, but public space in Troy was like $18 a square foot. So that's why I wondered.
Yeah, well, we're, we're under the market value for what they're going into our building for. It's under, it's not quite 18, but we did, I think we've done the best we.
Good. So we're undercutting the market to get opportunities. I like that.
Yep. And during this time, you know, I, I was happy to know that they were still moving forward with the deal based on what's all going on. And so I'll be happy when we get the second signed lease in our hand. But they're requesting it and we're sending it out to them.
Awesome job. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Malkaya does have a question related to how long is the lease with the new Realtor? I believe she's asking how long is the new contract with the new Realtor? Do you know that, Patrick?
I think it's a one year with options to renew. So we didn't go into a long-term relationship. I believe it's one year with options to renew. I believe that's what it, what it is. Don't quote me on that. I have to really look. But I think, I know we didn't go into a long, long contractual agreement. So I will provide that information.
It's Sarah. I had a quick question for you. With the Realtor, are they just showing property or are they like property management after the leases are executed?
They're just, right now, they'll be doing the same thing that our previous Realtor did, and that is to show property, to broker the deal. And after the deal is complete, that's, they'll move on to the next deal. But we have our own facility management in place already.
Thank you.
Patrick, do they, Patrick, this is Pat. Do, do the Realtor get a commission once they lock in a deal for us for the contract for OCHN?
Realtor gets the deal, gets a, wants the move-in date. That's when they get a commission when upon move-in.
Evidence, you're moving.
Yeah, once they move in, that's when they'll get commission.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any additional questions? Okay, hearing none. I thank you, Patrick. I think we'll go on to our next agenda item, which is the care coordination presentation. Nicole.
Hello again, everybody. I have the privilege of presenting with Emily Patterson this evening on some of our care coordination outcomes. Really, I'm going to provide just some historical context to provide the backdrop for Emily's research. And she's going to walk through her methodology and all of her outcomes with you. So some of the background, I'm going to go back to 2015 because that's when the department or MDHHS added shared measures for the PHPs and the Medicaid health plans. So every year, MDHHS withholds a percentage of our capitated payment, and we earn it back by meeting certain process or outcome measures. And this was the first year that they tied our withhold to portions, or I should say portions of our withhold to portions of the Medicaid health plans withhold. And we had to work together in order to achieve those. So this is one portion of that withhold. And to put it into context, we have earned back anywhere from about $750,000 to $1 million, depending on how much MDHHS actually ties to these outcomes. So a part of these measures was to identify ways that we could pick out who we mutually served that was most high-risk or at-risk, and then develop a shared plan for how we could maximize benefit to people while minimizing the amount of bureaucracy, red tape, systems navigation, and hopefully save money to the system by avoiding duplicative services at the same time. So in August of 2016, we went live with this process. And we have nurse case managers here at OCHN who track those highest-risk individuals and then meet with the health plans on a monthly basis in order to maximize service delivery. And so what they use to do this is called the Care Connect 360 online platform. And that is a software platform supplied to us by MDHHS. And it hosts all of the adjudicated claims, but then also lets us see the physical health, behavioral health pharmacy claims. It also hosts the shared care plan platform and runs what we call risk stratification. And so what does this high risk mean? What are the nurses looking for? Most simply put, it's people who are likely to be hospitalized or utilizing emergency departments due to their medical or behavioral health needs. As part of a statewide work group, we agreed upon a certain algorithm to determine who was highest risk for this. And this algorithm was built into the CC360 or Care Connect 360 platform. And it weighs the number of emergency department visits, the number of chronic health conditions, the number of total hospitalizations that a person has had within the last 12-month period, as well as the absence of primary or preventative care visits in the last 12 months. And so our nurses access this list each month, and they focus on the 20 people that are highest risk within our network. And then they have monthly meetings with all eight Medicaid health plans in our region to coordinate services and supports for those people. So really, that is a quick version of some of the historical context that we've been working on over the past five years. So really, that is a quick version of some of the historical context that we've been working on over the past five years. But that really sets the stage for when Emily came in with her capstone project for her master's degree and was really looking to see how she could apply that in a really useful way for OCHN. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Emily, who can walk you through her methodology and her outcomes.
All right. Thanks so much, Dr. Lawson, for setting the stage. This was really awesome that I had this opportunity, and it's been a privilege to work with the data that's available at OCHN. Oh, at forward. Practical perspective. Care coordination organizes and integrates components of a person's healthcare by working with both the individual and their providers to ensure that their physical and mental healthcare needs are met and that services are not duplicated or missed. So one of the key activities that the nurse case managers do is they have a weekly phone call with eight of the Medicaid health plans in the state to talk about some of these high-risk individuals that have been identified by the risk stratification. So they're making basic but critical connections for these people. And sometimes it's as simple as updating their contact information so that proper coordination of care can happen with the Medicaid health plan. Other activities include specialist referrals, researching providers that will take that person's insurance and figuring out where they can fill their prescriptions, making sure that the person understands how to take their prescriptions and that the prescribed medication orders are being filled. Our nurse case managers at OCHN become one point of contact for this person to navigate a very complex system. And they're collaborating with that Medicaid health provider to create the best healthcare for the whole person. Throughout electronic medical record. And then care coordination periods are considered closed when all of the individual's health management goals are met as they're tracked throughout the process. So then we move on to why coordinate care? It's really well established in the literature that care coordination achieves better outcomes for people. No shocker there. When all of your providers are on the same page and all of your care is continuous between providers, we know from the research that people have better outcomes. And what was really exciting and one of the reasons we wanted to look deeper into the data sets we had around care coordination is that a first look by Dr. Lawson revealed that there was a sixty-two percent reduction in hospitalizations and a thirty-eight percent reduction in use of emergency departments for the initial individuals who started with this care coordination program. That was based off of a hundred and seven individuals back in July of 2019. So these are huge reductions in care outcomes for these people and adverse health events. So now that we know why coordinate care, we're moving on to the question that I started researching and the question that I had for this research. So my question is, is there a cost effect and possible savings for the system so that we can do more good with the dollars we have when we coordinate care on these people? And we were more interested in, does care coordination between OCHN or a PIHP and the Medicaid health plans at the person level affect the cost of care for the whole public system? When we initiated this analysis, we were in the midst of fighting two ninety-eight. So we were very focused on person-centered. It's obviously something we believe very strongly in at OCHN. And we wanted to focus on the person level of care coordination. So this analysis here, as we move into costs, is still very, very relevant with system change coming. So digging into the analysis itself, this is the numbers. This is the part that I get really excited about. I, with the help of a lot of really awesome people on our business intelligence team, found completed care coordination records for individuals between August first of 2016 and June fifth of 2019. And that came up with ninety-five records. And that's following the same individual from before their care coordination period to after. So why only ninety-five records? We were looking for individuals whose care coordination period was done, signed, sealed, totally finished, so that we could compare apples to apples before and after. What we were specifically interested in is the costs for healthcare for that person in the ninety days before care coordination began and the ninety days after care coordination was marked completed in Odin. So the events captured to capture those costs were really high-intensity, high-risk healthcare events that captured medical hospitalizations, which the Medicaid health plan would have paid, psychiatric hospitalizations, which OCHN would have paid, and medical emergency department visits. So folks from OCHN identify specific codes, healthcare codes, so that we could capture the cost for these events. Another note before I move on to results is that cost from the Medicaid health plan perspective is an estimate. We got a table from the state. They were happy to share with us. But we have down to the individual what was actually paid. What we do have is what was actually paid from our side, the PIHP, OCHN side. So the the numbers there are actual what was paid for psychiatric hospitalizations for those individuals. Moving on to results. So this is the exciting part. This is the average reduction in cost per individual record comparing apples to apples ninety days before and ninety days after per individual in that data set. So you can see some very exciting changes that happened here before and after. So this is average per record. You'll see some little asterisks here. And the reason that I put the small print in there is to show as a researcher from a statistical perspective that I'm not super confident that this particular change for cost was not due to pure chance. And that I'm not surprised about because ER costs can be hugely variable. Hundred-dollar ER cost, or you can have a twenty-thousand-dollar ER visit cost. So that particular one was not what we would call statistically significant. But all of the other ones that I have here, hospitalization costs for both the Medicaid health plans and OCHN and the total cost altogether, the those changes did not happen due to chance. We can say with some certainty that our care coordination intervention had an effect on cost. So I'm excited about these numbers and we can move on to based off of these results. So one limitation that we have is that this is a small data set. However, these results are preliminary, but very exciting. So I would love to repeat this analysis, and we should repeat this analysis based off of these initial we're going to want is more records when we have more people who have completed their care coordination period. And then I'd also be interested in looking back to see, how do these results persist over time? So how does it look if we look at the one hundred and eighty days before care coordination and the hundred and eighty days after? And do these cost savings effects, do they persist over time? So a year later, are we still seeing these savings and how persistent is it? But the bottom line from this cost analysis is that individual level care coordination between PIHPs and MHPs is a possible potential path to significant savings and better outcomes for people. So at the state as a whole. So this was really fun and exciting. I wanted to acknowledge the work of a number of people who worked on this project. There was a lot of really awesome professionals from different departments who worked on this project. Gather at the end. Awesome. The clinical team, the nurse case managers, who are actually doing the boots-on-the-ground work, some OCHN employees over in the business analytics and IT team who pulled the data for us. And my facilitator at Central Michigan University that helped me go through the statistical process. So lots of really awesome professionals put a lot of work into this. So I want to acknowledge them. And at this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, Emily, we had a couple in chat. I'm not sure, though, Jonathan, how many occurrences of what? I didn't see exactly when your chat popped up.
I was typing that in and when when Emily rolled past the the page with the savings. And so I was trying, I knew you, and then right after that, you said it was a limited or a small set that you were looking at. But I was curious to know how many, how many patients or persons? And how many occurrences do we end up avoiding because of those savings?
So I think what what was your total N, Emily? How many, how many records essentially?
Individuals, ninety-five individuals. So that was ninety-five complete episodes. So there were a lot of people, I think, I'm trying to remember how many records I had to exclude. I had to exclude lots and lots of records because these were individuals that were still having their care coordinated. So the record wasn't closed because they hadn't met all of. So this time was ninety-five individuals.
So is the hypothesis if they if they have care coordination, these are the kinds, and they are high highs, these are the kinds of savings that will be realized by the by the plan and by us and ultimately by the state?
Potentially, yes. These, this is the average savings from this particular data set per individual. So if you averaged it out, then yes, for some people, the cost savings were very small. For others, they were very large. And for a very small amount, it's also possible that they went up. But on average, that was the cost savings to us on the patient side, to the MHP on the hospitalization side and on the ER side. Does that address your question?
It does. It basically tells me that care coordination provides value all the way around.
Is that the end of your questioning?
It is.
Okay, great. Are there other questions for Emily or Nicole? I think, once again, we've seen this is really encouraging information. And it seems like it it makes such a nice difference for people. And incidentally, does a nice financial kind of plus for the overall organization and hopefully the network and statewide. So I I really appreciate having this data. Thank you. Are there other questions or comments?
I have a question. Hello?
Okay, Vijaya?
Yes, the ER cost is not included in that. How could you explain why that is? Or is it because that artificially increases the cost because of comorbidities and other things?
I, she was cutting out a little bit there, but I think I can take that one. So I think you were asking about, if we could back up the slides maybe to the results one. I think you were talking about ER cost. And yeah, ER costs for this particular set of records, I'd be very interested to see what happens when we have more records. But for this particular set of records, there is no statistically significant difference in average healthcare costs for these events for particularly Medicaid health plan-paid ER visits. There's a couple hypotheses I have on why that happened. One is that ER costs are highly, highly variable. And the other one is maybe just that this particular set is too small to capture what's happening with ER costs.
So I have a follow-up on that. Then do you intend to continue this work? And are you thinking of increasing your sample?
With the blessing of the clinical, and who has worked on this, I would love to repeat this. And that our initial results really justify doing this again with more records and periods to evaluate what exactly is happening here. But maybe Dr. Lawson can speak to that more?
Sure, you absolutely have the blessing to move forward and do that. The other thing I'll add is a lot of this outcome work is really what led to the draft language around section two ninety-four, which we were offering at the time as an alternative to section two ninety-eight to really show that it's not a shift in funding that makes an impact for better services for people and lower costs to the system. It's really this type of care coordination that can have this impact. So our two ninety-four got lost in the shuffle a little bit with new administration and system redesign. Though we have continued to discuss with the department and really push that this is something that we would like to do and expand. Because what we would like to see is if these results maintain, even with people who perhaps have a lower risk level than the folks in Emily's sample. So right now, the people that we're looking at are the people who are most high risk. And what we'd like to see is, you know, do these results really replicate across the board so that we can really have the best possible savings to the system and services to people overall?
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Am I hearing none or are we? Well, it looks like we have had the questions answered and we appreciate the presentation and are encouraged by the results. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go on to the next item, which is the fiscal year nineteen annual plan and and budget year-end report. Excuse me. Never tried to talk through a sneeze before. That was quite interesting. Anya and Nicole again, please.
So I'm going to get out in front of that and say that this weather has also created the perfect storm for my sinuses and allergies. So
You and me both.
Yeah, if I pause to cough or sneeze, I will do my best to mute my microphone and hope my voice holds out. So we wanted to provide a brief overview of this process. This has kind of gone back and forth. I know the board has requested just some changes to have some ongoing process improvement. And then certainly with the the number of newer board members we have, I thought it might be helpful. So the board is responsible for an annual needs assessment and a plan to address the needs of our community. That's part of what's written in the mental health code. And over the years, we've developed a three-year strategic planning cycle that then has an annual plan for each year of that strategic plan. So currently, we are in year two of the current strategic plan. And next year, we'll be working on developing a three-year plan that will cover us for fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-four. So this, the chief operations officer leads the annual assessment on behalf of and in collaboration with the board. And then the board reviews and approves the strategic and annual plans in August or September, and they're considered live October first of each year. And OCHN staff then provide the update for progress. And so what you're seeing throughout the presentation tonight, when you see the hundred percent, the eighty percent, those types of things, that is staff self-reported progress on each of those goals. And so for the FY nineteen plan, you'll note that a fund source is tied to each goal. For FY twenty, we actually tied budget amounts to the goal. So I know that the board expressed a desire to be more involved in annual plan development and progress. And typically, this final report would have been presented to you back in November or December. But with the multitude of changes that we've experienced so far this year, we're just now getting to it. Ideally, we would be able to give you quarterly progress reports to allow for some more input or discussion on the progress. But just because of the various delays to things, the plan is that we will report out tonight on all of FY nineteen, which, just to frame that, is from October one of 2018 through September thirtieth of 2019. That we will do a major update in terms of where we're at for FY twenty. And then as soon as possible, we'll move on to quarterly updates. So because there's so many new members and our longer-serving members are always striving for ongoing improvement, we've adjusted the format to give you a visual versus narrative. And so that stated, please just let us know how we can best continue to make these adjustments to our presenting format so that this is informative and is easy to read as possible. So with that, I'm going to launch into our presentation. And so you'll see that for the FY nineteen plan and budget, we had six strategic goals or areas that were made up of twenty-two objectives and fifty-two tasks. And so our first strategic area of focus was our administration and operations. So if we can just move to the next slide. And I'm not going to, whoop, sorry, I wasn't going to read that one to you. But just our overall admin and operations. And so the next slide is our NCQA accreditation. And so we were awarded a one-year provisional status as a result of our review that occurred in July of 2019. But because this was our initial survey, we had the opportunity to either pursue a full-year accreditation or go along with a one-year provisional. We really wanted to get the three-year full accreditation, and so we are pursuing that option. So that is part of our FY twenty annual plan and our resurvey will occur in June of 2020. Next in that section is our value-based contracting. So we wanted to develop and implement value-based contracts across the board with all of our providers. We've seen really good quality outcomes for people as well as cost efficiencies and some incentives for providers. Our first objective, which is the seventy percent or the one in green, was to complete the transition. Our first objective, which is the seventy percent or the one in green, was to complete the transition of the remaining provider contracts. Um, at, at the end of FY 19, we had all of our providers, except for our substance use uh network, had been shifted over to value-based models. The um SUD providers were started, but they did get pushed back into FY 20 just to, to some competing priorities that came up in the course of FY 19. Our second objective was to ensure that we reviewed existing contracts for continuous refinement of outcomes, and that was one hundred percent completed. Uh, we review these internally and discuss our progress, usually um late winter, early spring, so March, April. Uh, we discuss desired changes, we draft new versions and send out to the providers, and then we hold a couple of meetings with each provider network just to review, to discuss, to negotiate those changes. And um, we did that successfully and had our online versions published by October 1st. So the next slide in that area and the last is our provider network development and management. So the first objective was to complete a core provider agency request for proposal or RFP. And this particular objective has been discussed over several years. Um, we haven't done a full core provider RFP in over 20 years. Um, and so a lot of the discussion has just centered around wanting to be in compliance with all federal procurement rules and regulations. Um, but there again, based on other competing priorities, uh, budget deficits and things like that, this was put on hold in FY 19, which is why you see a zero percent completion there. Um, the other objective to ensure that our network of residential and non-residential providers are in compliance with, with HCBS or home and community-based services, um, was sixty percent accomplished. And that was mostly due to waiting on uh MDHHS before we could proceed with several aspects of the implementation. Um, and to MDHHS's credit, they were working really hard with CMS for some clarity around a lot of different um aspects of that transition plan. MDHHS uh has pushed this out now until 2022. So we accomplished everything we could, um, and will continue to meet that 2022 deadline. So that is all of the goals around our admin and operations. So before we get into advocacy and empowerment, I'm just wondering if we have questions. Malkaya, are you planning to go forward with rebidding the provider contracts? Um, at this time, that decision hasn't been finalized. Um, Anya can step in and correct me if she has a different opinion. Um, but I think we're really planning to uh wait uh until we get the full-time CEO on board before we move forward with those discussions.
That is correct.
Um, this is Hadass. Can I make a comment too?
Sure.
Okay, just that it seems like we've waited so long to complete the core provider agency request for proposal. I mean, nothing's been done. Like, continue to wait, wait, I don't see the logic in that. I mean, yeah, I get it that you want it. We don't, unless we have a date or a timeframe of when we're going to have this new um executive in. But I just don't see why we would keep waiting because we've been waiting already two years. Why not do a little bit of it or something or get something started or at least if, if it's possible? Obviously, we're in a crisis now, that doesn't make sense. But I think there's, there should be some kind of timeline addressing something that's been on here and not addressed at all. That's all. Any comments? Other board members, do you agree, disagree?
So this is Anya. I'm happy to address that. Um, so there, there's several reasons why that's been held off. So one of the expectations is when we do an RFP, we have to truly be willing, able, able and capable to go with the bidder that um wins. And in a network um of limited providers that are larger providers, um, and that serve, uh, I would have to say twen- over twenty thousand people, that really just hasn't been something we are capable of doing and taking on in the last few years. So if you think about the last few years, we've been fighting 298 for um at least the last two years. And in fiscal year 20, obviously, we're just digging out of deficit budgets and um and just working towards now system redesign and those types of things. So it's really about deciding what the priorities are. And the reality is, we prefer to work to en- enhance our network than necessarily take the time to totally redesign it and go through the process of, of bidding it out if we are not fully capable of moving on from one provider to the next, if that's the results. So we continually work to better the network and better services for people. But to take on a whole provider bid process is a, is an enormous task um just because of the sheer volume of, of people that are served and the amount of work it would take to transition. So we just didn't feel like we were capable during these last few years to do that and to do that really in a way that was meaningful and that really supported the process. So we felt like it was better to focus on enhancing the network than it was to focus on bidding it out, given that um we do feel like our providers are doing a good job and we do feel like people are getting good services. And we don't have any uh major issues that we would consider, you know, egregious enough to, to cancel a contract because if that were the case, we would definitely do that. Nicole, if you have anything to add, feel free to do that.
No, I think you captured it.
Hey, uh, Anya and Nicole, this is Pat. I just listened to the conversation there with Hadass. Um, has, have you though looked at the provider contracts and saying, you know, if we were to ever do this? These are some of the adjustments based on our experience that we would probably look at incorporating into any type of bid that we would put out? Is there any marked up forms anywhere in, in the organization that where some work has been done saying, you know, that's something we should look at?
Yep, so we do that on an ongoing basis. Every year when we go into new contracts, um, we do that. We ta- take a look at what are we getting out of our contracts? What are we not getting that we want? We went through a major contract uh revision a couple of years ago that really was necessary, given the previous contract document and really put us in a better place to better manage contracts and providers. And really, and so that's an ongoing process. We don't wait for a bid to do that. We will, we do that ongoing and in collaboration with the provider network so they understand what our expectations are and so that we can get what we want in the, in the immediate, you know, service, not waiting till we bid out.
Okay, thanks.
And then there was another question in the chat. Um, are there any plans to open up any of the individual services we're providing now? Thinking maybe children's services in particular. Um, for FY 20, our current fiscal year, there isn't. Um, you know, that said, we're always looking, um, and we'll be starting the planning process for FY 21 here within the next month or so. Ideally, we would have actually already started that, but with um the pandemic and the crisis that we're in, we haven't been able to.
Are there any other questions from the board on this section? Hearing none, I think we can proceed.
Okay, so our next section um is on advocacy and empowerment, which is a um high-level strategic area. And moving into our first objective, um, increasing the numbers of people who you supported decision-making. Um, and so again, this is looking at the entire continuum of a person's civil rights, everything from plenary guardianship to no form of guardianship, um, and all of the power of attorney, repayee, fiduciary types of things that are in between. And we encountered some challenges in FY 19 on getting the data related to who had what type of guardian or guardianship. And so we worked very closely with the core providers and developed dashboards and we began collecting this data. Um, so got about halfway where we wanted to be last fiscal year. The second objective is to coordinate our advocacy and work groups. And certainly, um, our communications team does a great job of making sure that those are coordinated, that they're held regularly and that they um provide a platform for ongoing, meaningful participation and influence in the decisions um that are made in our building. And the next objective was to develop and launch the Less Labels, More Respect Anti-Stigma campaign. Um, and certainly that was quite successful, not only uh locally, but even statewide. Um, we had a really wonderful response to all of that. So moving down to the next, um, this is actually a very happy report. Um, the increasing of peer support and service encounters should read one hundred percent, not zero percent. There was a lot of work and discussion that was done on that throughout uh FY 19. A couple of important things we found. Um, one, we were, when we were looking at encounters, only people who have gone through the full certification process and are certified by the state can report the code given by MDHHS. So therefore, um, when we talked to providers, the providers would report that they had difficulty getting and keeping people certified. And so we implemented a local code where we could capture all the non-certified peer activity. And we were able to see that encounters did then increase. Compared from FY 18 to FY 19, we had an overall increase in encounters for peer mentor services by thirteen percent. Um, specifically, MRC increased by five percent, CLS increased by a hundred and ten percent. And the number of persons who received a peer mentor increased overall by fifty-six percent. So that is something that we have continued. So in FY 20 spoiler alert, uh, we did add contract incentives for increased peer encounters as well into all of our core provider contracts, um, so that we can continue to get traction and make increases in this area. Related to the SUD recovery coaches, um, part of this goal is actually cut off on your slide. And so this was to increase SUD recovery coaches in emergency departments um via a specific pilot called Project Assert. Um, and at the end of 19, the SUD work, uh, team was working really diligently to bring hospitals on board. Um, but we were having some difficulties getting them engaged because they were concerned over liability. Um, because essentially, it would be an OCHN staff person embedded into their emergency room. And there's a lot of um liability, accreditation, privileging and things like that that go with it. Um, we did, towards the end of the fiscal year, have a hospital that agreed to engage with us um and move forward. So we have been in those talks with that hospital to move forward. Next is our person and family-centered planning goal, um, to increase the network of available independent facilitators. We did add one independent facilitator via contract um that our entire network can work with. So that person is contracted with us and then our entire network can um utilize that person's skillset. The developmental disabilities council or the DD council out of Wayne State hosted a training in January of this year. And so we hope that we can have more trained independent facilitators um that we have the ability to contract with. So that was one thing we found is that they are few and far between out there. And so we're really hoping that that training from the DD council kind of opens that, opens that up for us a little bit too. Um, the second objective is to assist MDHHS in the development and implementation of a training curriculum. Uh, we were a very active participant with the department on that work group. And ultimately, they developed a training template and curriculum. They offered to come train on it, but they didn't mandate it. And we really determined that the training that was completed by the department was geared very much toward people with um mental illness and substance use disorder. And our value and very firm belief is that good person and family-centered planning practices are universal and that they should be driven by people and families. And so we have a goal in our FY 20 plan to develop a curriculum locally um, and that will be driven by the people and the families that we support. And the next goal is around self-determination. Just going to wait for the slide to advance there for a second.
Nicole, do you want to address a question real quick before you move on related to independent facilitators?
Uh, sure. What is being done to support other independent facilitators who are also working in our network? Um, I guess I would ask for some more clarification. Um, I know that there were, the core providers had reported some uh small contracts out there with people that they might just have kind of a go, an ongoing or retainer contract with. But I don't know of any like big use of those contracts. That was what we really got out of there too, is that a lot of people didn't understand independent facilitation and that they weren't really utilizing those contracts.
Uh, Nicole?
Yeah.
This is Malkaya. The reason I asked that question, I was at the conference last year, the session that you had on independent facilitation with the, uh, the person that was hired to provide it through OCHN. And I was sitting in the audience with, with other people who are uh independent facilitators and they were really kind of caught off guard by that. Because there, it, it didn't seem, it seemed like it came out of nowhere and it's people that are already working in the field and, and they were like, okay, what happens to us now? So I don't know if there was any kind of effort to find out uh sis, in our network, who was already providing that service and, and um trying to see is, before we took the step of hiring a person and promoting that person, did we do any work in the network to find out who was already providing that service and, and what was actually going on? Because it is one of those areas that's underutilized and a lot of people don't understand it.
Yeah, I get, and I guess um, to respond to your question, yes, we did do that work. Um, we had surveyed through the um improving practices leadership team or the IPLT, um, who had contracts, how many contracts they had. And we asked the, the network what supports they wanted. And the overwhelming response to us was that they wanted us to engage in that contract. And that they wanted us to support that person so that the entire network could, could utilize those independent facilitators. So that feedback that you got, Malkaya, did not make its way back to us. Um, so I guess I would apologize to those folks. It was never our intent to make few, people feel unsupported um or undervalued. And certainly, um, with those facilitators and as we work to develop this curriculum, we'll want to make sure that they are um included and supported through that process as well.
Well, my only other comeback to that is, Nicole, if you reached out to the, the agencies to ask who they were working with and didn't talk to the independent facilitators themselves, it, I could see how it would be easy to overlook some people. Um, because all information doesn't get to all levels, especially if you're an independent contractor, you're working uh and you're not working for an agency, you're just working for yourself, then who would support you? And, and the one lady that was sitting next to me, I mean, she was really flabbergasted, like, what's going to happen to me now? You know, and I, I kind of felt bad for her because it would, if I was in her shoes, it would have kind of caught me off guard too. Now we have this person, OCHN is promoting to do this work. What happens to the other people that are already doing this work or have been doing this work? It's like they, you know, they're kind of being pushed aside.
Yeah, and that was not the intent. So that's really good feedback for us to have. Thank you, Malkaya. Okay, I'm, can we still advance the slide? There we go, self-determination. So looking to increase the number of our self-directed arrangements. Um, so you'll see that's about a twenty percent completion. We didn't get as far as we wanted, um, although I can report that self-determined arrangements did increase by seven hundred um in FY 19. So that's also not exactly a small number, just not as large as what we were hoping for. And then the other objective to create opportunities for increase in self-directed arrangements. We did participate in a technical assistance opportunity through partners for self-determination to help us assist in future decision-making. Particularly, we're looking for an increased um opportunity for people served in our network that supports people with mental illness, um, as well as SED and SUD for self-determination. And we're considering an RFP or a request for proposal for a specific self-determination provider to expand choice and opportunity in those areas. So we got about seventy percent um down that road. And again, like Anya had said, with um so many changes and competing priorities at this point, we're not moving forward with any particular RFP right now while we evaluate where we sit. Um, so moving into service and provider choices.
Nicole?
Yes?
Before you go on with the self-determination, um, I've always kind of struggled with that, being a person who went through the system and receiving services for mental health. I've never really understood the um the program, how I've never really understood the program, how it's supposed to work for a person that has a mental health condition and, you know, receives services through our network. Is there any way that someone could provide, like, an example of what this would look like for a person with mental illness? I know there's a few people who have self-determined arrangements, but it never really made sense to me.
Yeah.
Because being a person, you know, if I'm part of an agency, and you're talking about me managing my budget, am I supposed to be responsible for hiring a case manager, hiring my psychiatrist, hiring my peer? That's kind of overwhelming to me just on this side of it. So it would be helpful if I had a little more information, because I don't see how it would work for us.
Yes, all of the questions you had were the same questions that were posed by all of the providers and a lot of people who receive services that said the exact same thing. And so our subject matter expert did put together presentations of how that would look in each network, just because of the unique needs of the people served in that network. So what we can do is try to get you that presentation. And then maybe we can set that up for a future presentation for the full board to really understand what that would look like from a larger systemic perspective.
And just one other follow-up to that question. Who's really pushing self-determination for adults with mental illness? Where's that push coming from? If it's not coming from the people themselves?
It's just a value that we want to make sure that people understand that it's out there and that it's an opportunity. So like anything else, it would be that person's choice. So we do have a handful of folks, like, specific to the MI network, who really wanted to pick and choose and control who was providing CLS supports and who their therapist was. And they didn't necessarily want to go through the core provider to do that. So we just wanted to make sure that everybody is aware of that choice and that ability. But then we also wanted to support the network in understanding how to make that happen so that everybody didn't feel like they were confused or like they were being replaced or anything like that.
Well, I appreciate getting that information when it's available. Thank you.
So our service and provider choices. So this was really just to collaborate between our customer services and our quality management team to make sure we had a really robust provider directory so that the people we support can make informed decisions about their options. Just like looking at the type of language is spoken, who's working where, and that they can really get as good of a feel as possible about the provider of their choice prior to going and getting the services there. So both of those goals were successfully updated, and the updated directory is published on our website, and it's also included in our welcome packet to the people we support. So I'm going to pause there and see if there's any other questions before we transition to Anya for our budget and finance update.
Are there any other questions from the members of the board regarding the section we just saw or the presentation up to this point? Okay, I think we can safely move on then to budget and finance.
So moving on to the first slide, I won't read this one to you because you can read it on your own. But budget and finance, goals and objectives for fiscal year 19. If you can move on to the next slide, please. Thank you. So overarching in fiscal year 19, one of our goals was to make sure that we were working with the network to implement and refine the service models and consistent payment that we had implemented in prior years. So there was a material amount of change that happened prior to fiscal year 19 related to adults with mental illness, vocational services, and many of the other networks to incorporate value-based purchasing and outcomes-based models. And in fiscal year 19, we implemented the service model for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. So our goal for last fiscal year really was to provide technical support and focus on how to make sure that those models were working and reviewing to make sure that the models that had been implemented in prior years were really getting us what we wanted and getting the outcomes we expected. In addition to that, we were continuing to focus on creating efficiencies within the network, which has been a long-term goal to reduce administrative layers as directed by MDHHS. And that's been us moving more towards direct contracting with providers and reducing the number of times there's duplication for administrative functions. In addition to that, we, in transitioning to outcomes-based contracting, we really focused on consistency in rates. And that's been an ongoing transition throughout all of this process, that moving from what were historical rates that varied by provider to really consistent rates that were adjusted based on level of need and things that were quantifiable, not just necessarily someone's ability to negotiate better or things like that. So as you can see, collaborate and provide technical assistance to the network, that one's 100%. We worked with all of our providers that were transitioning in fiscal year 19, that would have been the IDD Service Network. And they've really done really well with the implementation of their model and continue to do so in fiscal year 20. The refining revenue and expense modeling, you know, it seems like every time we get a model put together, the funding methodology changes or the area factor changes, or there's some material change in how we're funded, what we're funded, and those types of things. So that one's really a continual work in progress, which is why it's more of an 80% as opposed to 100. It's kind of more of an art than it is a science, as much as I would prefer it to be a science. And it's really predicated on a lot of historical knowledge and understanding what's really going on with the network and on with the state as a whole, not just necessarily the rates in and of themselves. Because just after several years of working within the system and with the state, you know, you get a sense of kind of how they function and kind of how they're leaning, and some of the conversations lead you to some of the conclusions that we've used in revenue projections. So the annual risk plan is something we have to do every fiscal year. It's a contractual requirement, so we did that back in December. That really just speaks to the potential risks and any mitigation strategies we have for those risks so that if and when they come to be, we have a plan for how to address So moving on to the next slide. So funding strategy. So we piloted and implemented the IDD service model in fiscal year 19. And as I mentioned in the previous slide, that one was pretty successful. We didn't run into near as many hiccups, I would say, from a service model perspective. It was the simplest from the amount of different components it had. It really ended up being a subcapitation model, which was a very different direction that we ended up with from what we started. And that was really based on conversations we had with the IDD Service Network and really what made sense for that network and those people being served. So as you can see, the SUD service population or substance use population, that one just didn't get started last year. Again, with other priorities, we needed to push that back. I will say that for fiscal year 20, we do have a draft model for, I believe it's residential services in the SUD network. So that is moving forward in fiscal year 20. So again, you see here, we were looking at reviewing and refining models that were implemented in fiscal year 18. That was done. We did change some things going from fiscal year 19 into fiscal year 20. We'll talk about that a little more going into when we talk about the year-end results. But one of the other things we really worked on in fiscal year 19 was the development and rollout of the specialized residential funding logic. And so when we took over those contracts, the rates, we were not tied to anything that we could find that was measurable. So over time, some had been adjusted, some had not. But we really wanted to take it down to its base and start to make sure that we were covering the costs that providers were incurring and that we were also incorporating expenses that were real to the network and were appropriate from a Medicaid funding perspective. So we spent a lot of time in fiscal year 19 doing that for a rollout of 10-1 in fiscal year 20. So that took a lot of the year, and that was something that has continued to create different challenges, just based on the needs of individuals, but was rolled out on October 1st. So that one was 100%. All right, so moving to the next slide, provider funding. So this is something we've had on our strategic plan, I know for at least this strategic plan and probably before then. After the first direct care wage increase that we were able to do in fiscal year 16 and the few that the state has been able to after that, we've really tried to want to continue to focus on being able to provide more resources to direct care professionals. And unfortunately, in fiscal year 19, we were still in a deficit budget. And so we were not able to do that in fiscal year 19. But that continues to be a goal of ours, is to redirect funding as we are able to to direct service professionals. And just to note, I did already speak to the direct service providers and new funding model methodology for specialized residential and residential services. So moving on from that. So funding advocacy is something that is a regular item on our annual plan and is something that is a continual work in progress with the department really understanding the needs of our organization, the needs of the system, and really the work we're doing related to value-based purchasing and value-based service models and how that does impact people's lives. And so for those of you who don't know, in fiscal year 20, 19 going into 20, there was an additional $244 million added to the appropriation, so I would consider that a win. But in addition to that, you know, we've been really fortunate to have people start to look at us as the subject matter experts on developing outcomes-based contracting. We've had some consulting contracts that we've done for other areas and for the state. Just because we kind of were the first ones to jump in headfirst and really try to make that work and work through the challenges. And, you know, we always really feel like it's a work in progress and it's never really done. We continually refine it. But it definitely has made an impact on the people's lives that we serve, and MDHHS is very understanding of what we've been doing and how we were kind of the pioneers in that and has utilized us to help teach other areas how to do some of those things. And finally, continue to work with MDHHS on actuarially funding, actuarial funding methods. I joke because actuarially, I always say it in quotes when I say it in person. And it's because I always believe that you can be really good at math and not necessarily understand the business. And you can't do one without the other, which is also very much why, you know, I think all of the people that work in our organization understand that you can't just understand clinical things, you have to also understand finance. And it's really a cross-representation of knowing the bigger picture. And so that's really something that we strive for with, when we are with the department and when we are meeting with anyone, really, is to make sure they understand, you know, the nuances of the behavioral health system. And really, it's not as easy as just basic math and helping them understand the impact of some of the decisions they make and things like that. And that's ongoing. I would, you know, until everybody's funded appropriately, I would probably not call that one 100%. But it definitely, we're definitely making progress. And I do think there's a little better understanding of the system and its needs than in prior So I believe the next slide talks about results from fiscal year 19, but I want to pause there before we move on to answer any questions relating to the goals and objectives before we go to fiscal year 19 results.
I guess it's okay to move on to the results, then?
Okay. This is not the slide I thought we were on.
Nope, that's what I texted you about earlier.
That's the slide I thought we were on. So we'll have to jump back and forth a bit. I apologize, because the version I have has mine earlier. So what I wanted to show just, this was the budget amendment number one from fiscal year 19. So the way we structure the budget that the public sees and whatnot is really from a fund source perspective, because our balance sheet can be a bit misleading because it combines all the fund sources. So it would give you that net deficit down at the bottom there that's highlighted of 13 million. And the difference with fund source management is it's not anywhere near that simple. And some fund sources can be used interchangeably, some fund sources cannot, some are never allowed to be used for certain things, you know, some have no restrictions. And so this document is really on a temp to try to articulate the ones that can be commingled versus the ones that cannot. And so we went into fiscal year 19 planning for a deficit. We did a plentiful use of reserves because we made the decision, both in fiscal year 18 and in fiscal year 19, not to make the reductions that we saw other people make because of the impact it had on people's lives. And we had a level of reserves that we felt comfortable in utilizing, knowing we were counteracting that use of reserves with reduction in administrative layers, with consistency in rates and consistency in service delivery and all of those things we've talked about previously. We knew we were working on all of those things and also knowing that, just based on my history in the organization and others, is that the way funding works in the behavioral health system is a two-year cycle. And it seems like it's always, you know, it's either on an upswing or a downswing. There is no in-between. And so having lived through this several times, I've seen also what it does when you react, in a way, to short-term funding changes, to push providers to, let's say, draft 10% and 15% budget reductions and what that does to providers and people and how that impacts the system. And so we really felt like it was necessary to be a stabilizer for the Oakland network. And I do think that that was the right thing to do in the long run. As the finance person, it's always hard to have a planned deficit budget, but I also very strongly believe it was the right thing to do. And that's why we're allowed to hold reserves is for things like that. And so we went into the fiscal year knowing we were going to have a budget or a budget deficit. And as you can see in that top right shaded area, we planned a $21 million Medicaid deficit. We planned a roughly $5.4 million surplus in unrestricted fund balance. So what that means is, so general fund, local, and some other fund sources don't have the same restrictions as Medicaid. So we are allowed to use them for things like Medicaid deficits. We don't have to, but we're allowed to. So we were planning for a $5.4 million surplus in those fund sources. And in substance use disorders, we typically get more PA2 money, which is a convention and liquor tax, than we spend. So again, we knew we were going to have a surplus in that area. The net of all that is around $13.5 million deficit. Again, it's not as simple as just adding and subtracting all of those, because there's a lot more fund source restriction than are obviously articulated in this page. But that's the end result, is about $13.5 million. So the next slide moves on to what was the actual result of fiscal year 19, in as close format as we could come to how we report it to the state. So what I can tell you is our revenue was almost within pennies on. We're pretty good at predicting revenue at this point, and because we do amendments throughout the year, we adjust as needed. So, you know, we make an estimate back in August for the fiscal year. We adj- So, you know, we make an estimate back in August for the fiscal year, we adjust sometime typically in January, and then at times we adjust later in the year, like in June or July, just to adjust depending on trends that are going on. But what I do want to point out is you can see that the Medicaid deficit ended up being about 24 million. So that can be due to a couple of different things. So it could be that expenses were higher, it could be that just the fund source split could be different. So let's say if more people are Medicaid eligible than we expected versus general fund, it can swing that way. But when you look at the very bottom, what you can see is the total deficit actually went up. And what that is actually specifically attributed to is the increase in hospitalization that we saw, the increase in expense. I need to clarify that. We had about a $5 million increase in the hospital expense, primarily due to increased hospital expenses because what we're seeing is people are reaching their Medicare lifetime max for days. So that means we're responsible for more of their stay. And other things like state facilities are backed up. And so if someone's in a community hospital and they can't get into a state facility, they have to stay in that community hospital until a placement opens up. So some of those things contribute to a $5 million increase in the hospitalization cost, whereas we didn't actually see too many overages in provider expenses. We really saw the net of provider expenses was less than what we budgeted, but that hospital expense increase did have a material impact on the overarching budget. And unfortunately, hospital budgets are not something we really have the ability to cut back on. You know, we're required to pay for them and we do as necessary based on, you know, whoever the person is, what coverage they show up with, and whatever the expenses based on their length of stay. So unfortunately, it's probably the least, the area we have the least amount of control over. So it's something we continue to watch and continue to monitor. And I will say that one of the things we did for fiscal year 20, because we saw such an increase in the hospitalization expense, was to structure the incentive around hospitalization and recidivism differently so that we can really have people focusing on keeping people out of the hospital. That's always been a goal, but the goal isn't really being achieved based on that increase in expense. So we did adjust that incentive to really focus on updates to crisis plans and follow-up within three days of a crisis to try really to avoid hospitalization if at all possible. So with that, what questions do people have?
Anya, I'd like to ask a couple of things on the finance.
Okay.
There were some of the general ones I sent in earlier, but what's the status of rebasing going forward?
So rebasing is, in this particular year, we are experiencing the first half of the most recent rebasing, which they're now calling an area factor, which we ended up on the winning end of. Because they're utilizing some tools that they haven't utilized in the past, we actually got an increase because of that. In fiscal year 21, we will see the remainder of that increase, what, again, what they're calling the area factor, which really just gives us a bump comparatively to the state average.
Okay, so we should be basically eliminating our amount that we got taken away?
No, there was a lot of money taken from the system. I will say there was roughly $244 million to put back in in fiscal year 20 as we work with the state to make sure that's all being pushed out. It still remains to be seen how much we'll end up with. I am still fairly confident in the 5% we did put in the budget because the state did project 7.2%. And so I do think we will come to that by the end of the fiscal year once all money is collected.
Yeah, I mean, if there's, you know, I would say if there's anything that you could leverage the board members for in that regard, you know, please do. You know, in whatever context we could be helpful, please, please bring us in.
Okay.
I'll push that. Also, what, the other thing was, you know, I know Wayne County gets paid more, their caregivers get paid more than traditionally they get paid in our county. How does that happen? How do we set a goal where we can get to their level?
So Wayne County pushed out a $2 increase back in fiscal year 16, I believe, when we pushed out, I believe it was 50 cents. So the unfortunate part with that was that, you know, Wayne County did a 10% reduction in fiscal year 20. So they're a little more, at the time, they had more money to do it with. We did not. And so they did not, at the time, lose as much as we did. We lost 30 to 40 million dollars with the last round of rebasing prior to this one. So they were able to fund that. And unfortunately, we were not able to. So we had done a 50 cent increase in fiscal year 16, and then the state did, I think, a total of 75 cents off the top of my head in a few subsequent years. But what I can say consistently is that our methodology pays at roughly, you know, the average wage of, I think, $11.42. And as you saw in the previous goals, it's always our goal to redirect money into direct care workers. It's just been a matter of, we have had a couple of really, really down years with the fiscal year 18 and fiscal year 19 deficits. And so it just wasn't fiscally responsible for us at that time to be pushing an additional $5 million out for another 50 cents when we had deficit budgets. But that is always a long-term goal, is to increase those rates. And as we are able, that will definitely be our recommendation from the leadership team.
Yeah, I think when we get into the planning process coming in this year, I think we should really try to achieve those type of goals and put together plans that actually drive us to get that done. Now, even if it's from different revenue sources, I'm not exactly sure how that would work, but we'd have to look at other opportunities just to make sure that we could get to that level.
Yep, that's always a goal.
Because it just causes heavy turnover and all kinds of issues.
Yep. We've also got some pilots going in fiscal year 20 to help use technology to reduce the need for staffing so that then those funds could be utilized during other times for staffing. So if we're able to reduce staffing, let's say in overnight hours, we could redirect those funds to during the day.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Anya, before you move on, there's been a little bit of background noise, so I am going to mute everybody and you'll need to unmute yourself. I am going to ask that, I've had some people unmute themselves after I've muted. Please do not unmute yourself once I do this mute. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm unmuted again. If anyone has additional questions, please let me know before we move on.
I'm going to take that as no additional questions. I want to be correct about that, make sure everybody has a chance. I guess I would ask you, when do you expect the next report on fiscal year 20 to come before the board?
So we'll have financials next week. The biggest change will be once we can see the April payment. The April payment will have the year-to-date what's owed from the capitation adjustment. So that'll give us a better sense of where we are year-to-date, and then probably we will start to model out revenue for the rest of the fiscal year. And even with some of those missing half waiver payments, we may start to model that out because we know eventually we'll get money for that. We just have not been accruing that. And certainly, we can pull that together and show the board what that looks like so that they have an understanding of what we expect to get when this is said and done.
I think that'll be really helpful. Thank you. Are there any last-minute questions here on the presentation on the annual budget and plan and budget from fiscal year 19? Okay, hearing none, I think we'll move on in our agenda to other business. And I have a piece of other business perhaps.
Judy, I'm really sorry. There's another section to this that my slides were in the wrong spot that Nicole will still cover.
All right, great.
Sorry.
Nope, no problem.
Now, I'm really sorry because you've got several more slides. So to everyone that was hopeful that we were moving on, my apologies, and I'll move as quickly as I can. So moving into the health and wellness, the first objective around care coordination. Continue our participation in ongoing statewide collaboration with the health plans. There are several of us that attend every meeting. I continue to volunteer to chair various groups and subcommittees. And then explore options to enhance current collaborative efforts with Owen, who is now Honor Community Health, as well as the Oakland County Health Division. And we've had several meetings with both of those organizations to explore data exchange. We worked very closely and pretty intensely with Honor Community Health the past year. And we've exchanged some draft care coordination documents, which contain some basic information needed for care coordination. We've explored both using some type of a third-party data exchange like Great Lakes Health Connect for exchanging lab orders, prescription data, that kind of thing. And we are still working at finalizing the detail on those processes. They can be very complicated just to make sure that we are, one, getting what we need and having different systems talking to one another, and then, two, also abiding by all of the confidentiality related to HIPAA and 42 CFR. Moving into our emergency department and hospital visits. Participating in ongoing statewide and regional work groups. We certainly participated in all the work groups we could to address any issue related to ED use and hospital visits. Some of you may recall there was a MyPad group, which was eventually disbanded. So many of those meetings were canceled. Some of them are still going on. We continue to try and smooth out those processes to reduce the ED visits. We started piloting a medical clearance process locally. We're doing ongoing care coordination, which, based on Emily's research tonight, we know is quite effective at reducing those. And we also have incentives built into our value-based purchasing models to address those issues. The other objective, implementing telepsychiatry in our crisis center. Oasis is up and running. They're able to provide telepsychiatry services. We do bump into some process barriers in utilizing it to its fullest capacity, just in that some hospital emergency departments want common ground staff, again, credentialed, privileged at their hospital. And that takes some, just a lot of kind of bureaucracy, for lack of a better word, a lot of negotiation, and it's some very process-heavy discussions. Common Ground's done a really wonderful job working with one of our local hospitals to pilot the use of telehealth and to see how we can make it work then with more hospitals around our region. Moving into population health management. To continue the use of ProAct, which is a software tool that we use, we purchase using state grant funds and helps us to understand the different chronic healthcare conditions of the people we serve, how it impacts their overall health and wellness. And it can help us do anything from targeted outreach to try and prevent poor health outcomes such as a hospitalization, to helping to train our provider network on the most common or most prevalent chronic healthcare conditions that the folks we support may experience. And then to continue implementing and refining our complex case management program, which is very similar to what Emily described earlier tonight. It's a little bit more intense, and it does not require that that person meet criteria for the Medicaid health plan collaboration. So pretty similar, just a couple of minor differences there. So I'm going to pause and see if there's any questions related to that before we move into the services and support section.
Are there questions? I think we can move on then.
Okay. So the first objective there is around children, youth, and families and making sure we continue to focus on the support needs of youth in our system. And the first objective is developing incentives in our service models, and certainly we've done that. Some of the incentive examples include anything from family engagement to service delivery above and beyond the Medicaid minimum requirements, as well as maintaining our low hospitalization rates that Anya had just referred to as well. The second objective, implementing our youth suicide prevention work plan. We did successfully complete all of the objectives related to our work plan, as well as our suicide prevention grant. And certainly, while even one death by suicide is too many, we did see an almost 50% reduction in youth suicides last year. So we know we're making progress. We know we're on the right track and doing good work in that area. Moving on to our justice initiatives. Implementing initiatives as outlined in the Mental Health Diversion Council work plan. So we did achieve all of the initiatives that were implemented, with the exception of a sustainability plan. The diversion council did announce that funding to the pilot communities, such as Oakland, was being reduced significantly for FY '20. And so we really had to scramble to find any sustainable efforts. And like Anya said, with two years of such cuts and deficits, the last thing we wanted to do was cut services to people in order to sustain something that had been previously funded by a grant. So that's why you see the 80% there. And then co-facilitating a statewide justice or behavioral work group. That group had expanded to include multiple communities beyond just Oakland. Because it had expanded, we then turned it over to Community Mental Health, the CMHA. And so they continue to support those efforts and coordinate with MDHHS, as well as the diversion council around those efforts. So we did it for the year and turned it over, which is again why you see the 80%. Moving into crisis services, improving crisis stabilization and treatment services. We did evaluate the services. The results were not overly significant, but it was also a bit confusing with our rollout as it's only for youth with Medicaid. And it's not just for any youth in our county. And so this is the mobile crisis stabilization. And typically, when you're really evaluating something, best practice is three years. And this was our startup year. It included a lot of ramp-up efforts and things like that. It is a Medicaid service. We are required to offer it, so we continue to do so. And then the state had funded a coordinator's position, which allowed us to get this up and running off the ground and was really quite useful to us, but they did not fund it beyond FY '20. So that's why, again, you see that kind of 90% there. We were unable to sustain that position without that grant funding. And there was also a children's crisis work group that was led by the Oakland County Crisis Coordinator position, and that was dissolved once there was no lead to continue on that function.
Nicole, I have a question. John Paul Torres. The grant you were talking about for the justice portion, the slide before this current one, on that, you mentioned that it was some of the pilot programs that had lost funding. Is that correct?
Yes, the diversion council reduced the funding to the pilot really significantly.
Okay, and how significant was it?
I want to say by at least 20%. And then, if I'm not mistaken, I believe we got an email very recently that we just got cut another 20%.
Okay, and is the reflection in the cut of the next, the additional 20%? Is that just a recent email then? That's just new information that came out?
Yes, but we had to make that cut within this fiscal year. So we were told in 19 that it was being cut for 20, and then it just got cut a second time already in 20.
Wow, okay, thank you.
Yep. Moving into our culturally competent services. With our Veterans Family and Strategic Plan, we've gotten a new referral sheet that was developed so that we can have all of our community partners from juvenile justice to schools, the VA, our core providers, to refer people to our Veterans Navigator. So we've got a greater retention for follow-through. And our Veterans Navigator, Shaka, continues to attend quarterly meetings. He's got a great process in place with our local juvenile justice liaisons and with Oakland schools. So he continues to implement all of those strategic goals and plans. And then we have continued to implement the five-year cultural competency work plan. So we've got that at about 60%. It's going a little slower than we would like. But in FY '19, Tricia Zuzumbo, our Director of Training, has taken this on and she revamped the plan. And I think that, long-term, it's really going to result in some better outcomes for our community. So, we are excited to see where that goes into FY '20. And we're going to move into our social determinants of health and focusing on housing for people that we support and looking at that first objective, increasing access to safe, stable, and housing assistance programs. So, we did have 12 units that were created through Unity Park Five. And we placed 31 units of housing in services at Jefferson Oaks. So, there, again, maybe not as many as we wanted, but we did have definite improvement in that area throughout the course of the fiscal year. And then the other objective, continued development of the Oakland Housing Link to increase access to available housing. By the end of FY '19, we had 613 email tickets, 311 registered users, 338 calls logged, and we have 212 licensed and 47 unlicensed homes that are listed in Housing Link. So, we continue to make progress in that area and have that resource available, not only to the people we serve, but then certainly case managers and supports coordinators who need the additional assistance as well. Looking at employment and increasing household income through competitive employment. In FY '19, we saw a 39% increase in people receiving supported employment services. And among people receiving general supported employment from our Supported Employment or Vocational Provider Network, 72% of people successfully transitioned from Phase One into Phase Two, which means they've been employed at least a year or longer. And 10% of people transitioned to a lower acuity level, meaning that they needed less intensive supports in order to maintain their success in their employment. Also, in the fiscal year, we had 187 individuals who were adults with mental illness that received jobs through Easter Seals, CNS Healthcare, and through TTI's IPS-supported employment models. So, we are very proud with where we're headed with employment and maintaining competitive and integrated employment for people in the community. Moving into transportation. So, you'll see two objectives, and there's one update to cover both. We wanted to increase transportation options by leveraging resources to increase rides. And we also wanted to collaborate with our community partners and stakeholders to create a more coordinated transportation resource through the county. In FY '19, we received a Federal Transportation Administration grant midway through the year to fund a transportation analyst position. So, this position was filled and began their work in July of 2019. And he has developed a needs assessment and a survey. And we're looking for input from people and families that receive services, as well as our providers, core providers, vocational providers, and community partners throughout Oakland County. So, we are in the midst of that work right now. Moving on to our substance use prevention and treatment. Our first objective, to select new recovery housing providers, was 100% completed. We now have several recovery homes between three providers. And once fully open, we will have eight different homes between Pontiac, Milford, and Madison Heights to offer to people. We wanted to establish a contract with the Michigan Department of Corrections. That was a very long process. And eventually, the Michigan Department of Corrections decided they wanted to go in a different direction, and they contracted directly with MDHHS and have all of their MDOC requirements lined in through our PIHP contract. So, MDHHS is managing that portion of the contract on behalf of the Michigan Department of Corrections. And then we wanted to continue our opioid-related prevention and treatment services. The reason you see the 90%, the only program we haven't launched is the Project Assert. And you saw that earlier in working with our emergency departments as part of a goal. So, we continue to seek out a hospital partner for us to embed a substance use recovery coach in the hospital. But we did see a significant decrease in overdose deaths. It was about 29%. And the data showed that more people are staying in treatment and entering into recovery. Opiate use disorders are no longer the number-one reason people are seeking treatment. And so, that was a very major shift in our data, a very positive shift in our data for FY '19. Okay, so I'm going to pause and see if there's any questions there before I move into technology and innovation.
Are there questions?
I put a question in the chat, but I'll go ahead and ask it. With the eight recovery homes that we have in Oakland County, are any of them for females only, or do you know?
You know what, Melkai, I'm not 100% sure. Let me check with Christina, and we can get back with you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I missed your chat.
Nicole, I had a question, John Paul. You had indicated that the opioid is no longer the number-one drug of choice. Is that correct?
It's no longer the number-one reason people seek treatment.
No longer the number, what is?
You know what? I'm not sure if I can follow up with our FY '19 or if that's shifted with FY '20. I can tell you, we've seen an increase in methamphetamines. And traditionally, alcohol had been the number-one. So, I'm not sure which of those two. But again, I can check with Christina and let you know for sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay, I think we can go with the next section.
All right. Last, but certainly not least, our section on technology and innovation. So, we wanted to evaluate our use of dashboards and analytics to monitor data, as well as trends. If we can advance the slide just one, please. And you'll see this is 50% completed. But our IT team did an evaluation of the tools that we use and ultimately decided to shift from iDashboards to Power BI, which is where we get all of the really good heat maps and just additional flexibility with our data. And so, that just put a hold on us moving forward with development of any new dashboards or even updates while we got Power BI up and running. We just didn't want to duplicate the work. Moving on into looking at innovative technology. We wanted to test a smart speaker and evaluate vendors to see if we could integrate smart speakers as a way to support people with less intrusive methodology. So, we would still be able to provide support, but people would maybe feel a little more independent or just not as, I guess, intrusive or invasive. And so, we looked at Pillow, which is a smart speaker that dispenses medication. And we considered using it for people who enrolled in our complex case management project. We went through how we would implement that and how we would support people to use it and ultimately determined we would delay it because it required an internet connection. And so, making sure people had internet, reliable internet, how we would support that from a technology perspective, got us into the weeds and got things fairly complicated fairly quickly for a device that people would rely on for their health, wellness, and possibly medication dispensing. And we did not want to have any mistakes in that regard. And so, we're waiting. There was a device that's supposed to be released that has integrated cellular connectivity, which is a little bit more stable and reliable than possibly the internet connection. And so, once it's released, we'll reevaluate. And we always are looking at new HIPAA-compliant smart speakers and products coming out to the market, such as Alexa and Amazon getting approval for that to be HIPAA-compliant. Looking at the other objective, evaluate three tools that promote the use of technology to support people we serve. We did have several demonstrations of different apps to assist people by providing content or trying to provide some predictive analytics. But we really haven't found the one that we think can really support the most people or that would really be a good use of public funding at this point. So, some of the ones that we thought might be really good to implement were really, really expensive. And then the ones that tended to be on the less expensive side, we really just didn't see the versatility that we would want to see with the work that it would take to get something like that up and running and implemented for our system. So, then moving on into health information exchange. Looking to partner with Honor Community Health to identify options to exchange physical health information. We continue to work with Honor Community Health regarding the exchange of this information between our two organizations. And I discussed some of those different options up above with the health and wellness objective. And the last objective on that one, to identify additional opportunities to share data using the Michigan Health Information Network, or MYHIN. We did meet with MYHIN and Great Lakes Health Connect. We've had several opportunities to discuss data exchange. And we were the first PIHP in the state to begin submitting admissions and discharges and transfers, otherwise known as ADT messages, towards the end of the fiscal year. We just wanted to make sure that we were in line with HIPAA, the Mental Health Code, and all 42 CFR regulations. So, we were able to do that at the end of FY '19. So, with that, that is the last section. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions? I have just kind of, this is probably more about the hour than about my wisdom. But with this current crisis, obviously, telehealth has taken a whole new role. Ann, do you think there will be any ultimate softening of the resistance to, on the part of hospitals, to incorporating telehealth into how we do what we do?
In terms of the hospitals, I don't know. I would say, honestly, that one's a 50-50. Because right now, nothing's really softened, because we can't get in there. So, they really haven't even loosened a lot of those requirements at one point. What we're really hoping for, the looser requirements in terms of us being able to deliver it systemically. Our biggest holdup was what was called the location code. And that required that not only the person delivering the service, but also the person receiving the service was at a provider site, which kind of defeats the purpose to some extent for people who, for whatever reason, would prefer to have that service delivered in their home. So, we're really hoping that those types of restrictions will remain loosened post-crisis. But we certainly hold out hope for the hospitals loosening up as well.
Well, it seems like, unfortunately, we have quite a, I don't know, incubation on the opportunity to learn that we might not have had otherwise.
Yes, that's very true.
You know, just kind of digging for a silver lining in all this, I guess. It's my eternal optimism.
Yes, yeah.
Working against me, I don't know. Are there any other questions or remarks on this presentation of the fiscal year '19 plan and budget?
I do have a follow-up. Christina was able to come in. So, Melkai, in response to your question, we do have one female home through Turning Point, specific for people with, for females with SUD issues. And, John Paul, it did go back to alcohol being the number-one reason people seek SUD treatment. We've seen a rise in methamphetamine, but it was only 3%.
Are there any other questions or remarks? Well, thank you. That certainly was a very comprehensive presentation.
Thank you.
I think, is it safe for me to move on to the next item? I'm going to just ask you all, in terms of other business. Our next meeting, our board meeting, is scheduled to be from 6 until 8. We're following our same schedule for times. And I was wondering if there was any interest in moving that up to later in the afternoon, maybe? I'm suggesting from 4 until 6. I'm not going to ask for your responses right this minute, but when we do a board member comment, if you would let me know if you have interest in starting our board meeting at 4 rather than at 6, maybe you could let me know at that time. With that, Christine, is there any additional public comment?
We did have one public comment submitted through the forum. And again, I just want to remind everyone, we are monitoring the chat and the forum, and Customer Services will respond to your questions. This one is from Michelle Martin, and she said, "Twofold question concerning supporting individuals with ADD in hospital settings. My daughter was on a national self-advocates meeting in the state of Network Self-Advocates. Were able to get legislation last Friday. Just like along with spouses of pregnant women, the spouse may accompany in hospital settings during the time. Family to support the member may accompany the ADD individual in the hospital setting at the same time. My issue is individuals with developmental disabilities, being so vulnerable, need a support person with them within hospital settings. This is not new to families of those with disabled family members. How can we get a site in Oakland County? As Oakland County is the second-biggest number of COVID individuals in the state." So, I will be sure to pass that question on to Mike Daly.
Okay, thank you. Is that the extent of our public comment?
Yeah, that was the only public comment we received through the forum.
Great, well, we appreciate everybody for participating. Their comments are always welcome, and I hope that that will continue. The people will feel more comfortable to access the forum and let us know what's on their mind. So, thanks, Christine. The next item on the agenda is board member comment. And I'm going to ask Sheila if she would just go through the roll and find out if there are comments from our board members and also if they are interested in moving the meeting next Tuesday to 4:00 instead of 6.
Sure. First is Ms. Bernard.
Is this for board member comment? Okay, there you go.
I just want to thank everybody for the reports. They were excellent. And then also, I also appreciated the last public comment about, so, and I'm just wondering the response to that public comment, if that can also be shared with the board at our next meeting, because I'm very curious to know the answer. The one about the ADD, you know, having someone with them if they have to, because of COVID-19.
Yeah, that's also be shared with the board.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, thank you, everybody. Stay healthy.
And then your vote on moving the meeting to 4:00?
I can go either way, so whatever works for everyone is fine for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Furman?
I would just like to, again, compliment the work of the staff putting the presentations together. Also, I know I spoke to the head of a presidential service provider in the last week. Really, some of the phrases of Anya in particular, truly being on top of the OCHN response to the COVID-19 crisis. So, thank you for that. I also found it's really enlightening, the coordination of care presentation tonight with the possibilities to better serve individuals in the future while saving money in the process. So, that's great. I would also like to say that I would be open to moving the meeting to 4:00 next Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Guadalupe?
Hi. I just want to thank everyone as well, all the staff that I know are putting in extra hours, and they're getting everything prepared for us, as well as, you know, ensuring the individuals we serve are taken care of during this time. So, thank you, everyone. And I would be in agreement to move the meeting to 4. Thank you.
Dr. Hans?
Hello, can you hear me?
Also, I had a quick question that I missed, and that was regarding PPE, if we have adequate supplies of that until the shelter-in-place order is lifted, which may go on for several weeks, as I understand. And I most of all want to thank everyone on the team, leadership team, and the staff for the hard work they are doing. This is unprecedented, and we just, I think they're doing a very good job. I say that as a family member, of someone who receives services, and I want to express my gratitude. Thank you.
Dr. Lawson, do you want to cover the PPE question?
Yep. So, we don't have an indefinite supply of PPE, unfortunately. We're giving as many of the supplies as we have, such as the hand sanitizer, the disinfectant out, to as many of the homes as possible. We are following the health department's lead in terms of the KN95 masks and the gowns that staff need to protect themselves, that if we have someone who has known exposure and is exhibiting symptoms, then we are prioritizing those homes, and those are the homes that we're giving PPE to. We have been able to give PPE to all of those homes to last them a month, which is beyond the 14 days, just to make sure that all the staff and all the people that are in those homes can stay safe. But unfortunately, depending on how many people may or may not be exposed or get sick, we might not have enough to extend to our entire network through the duration of the stay-at-home. Did I capture everything you wanted there, Dr. Han?
Well, I hope that we can get some more somewhere, but I don't know how, if we are allowed to procure in the open market, which is, if there are any to be had, and I doubt that. But anyway, thank you for everything you are doing.
Thank you.
Mr. Kemp?
Just want to thank everybody for the review. I thought the review over the plan, the annual plan, was very, very good. And I'm glad we had an opportunity to ask some questions, and it clarifies quite a few things. So, everybody's doing good work. I know we're going some trying times. I like the idea of the opportunities to do things on the web, or whatever we want to call this. You know, it may be appropriate to start looking at this and some of the other things that we've had to push back, like the CEO church. But I appreciate everybody working as hard as they can at OCHN, and keep up the good work, and we're behind you. Thank you.
Are you able to attend the meeting from 4 to 6?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Lindemere?
Hi, I just wanted to send out my thoughts to all of the staff that's been working so hard during this crisis. I really get concerned about their physical health and their mental health. Sounds like you guys are really working hard to make sure that people are being responded to if they're having difficulty. So, really appreciate that. As a person that's, I've been in alcohol recovery for 11 years now, it really concerns me about what's going on in the community with substance abuse, because when, in a situation like right now, people that would normally be going to, say, AA meetings and other kinds of substance abuse meetings, they can't meet together. And so, there are just a lot of risks out there for people in substance abuse. I was going to one of our providers on a weekly basis to lead a panel discussion about substance abuse, and we can't do that anymore. And just, I'm really concerned about the increased need to our provider as this goes on with people abusing substances and that leading to other crises in the community, like domestic violence, so. I just wanted to mention that. And I'd be great, I'd be happy to meet at 4. I prefer 4 o'clock meetings, by the way.
Thank you. Mr. Landsman?
I think it's amazing what our direct providers, the staff in the field are doing, our own teams and our staff, in terms of keeping this system going. I know it's tough. And even though you may not hear enough, it is not a thankless role. You all do good work. I certainly appreciate it. I know I'm on the physical healthcare side, and I see what's going on there. And, you know, putting that on, putting that strain on the mental health side is even much more tough, much more challenging. So, I wish you all well. You've got my backing, et cetera, for keeping going with the good things that you guys do. From a, from a meeting perspective, I'm our usual outlier. I can make 5 o'clock, I can't make 4. I might be able to make 4:30. It could be tough. So, if you have to start the meeting earlier, then start the meeting earlier. I will attend, and I will be late. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Newman?
Thank you, everybody, for the work that's going on there. Have, being a person who's, who is a product of this system, I know how important the work is, that it continues to go on. And I'm really proud of the work that Oakland County does. I've seen it up close and personal. But with that being said, I'm also looking at how this crisis is really revealing a lot of the weaknesses that are in the healthcare system overall. It's really disturbing to me that it's taking national attention now that there are more African-American people dying from the COVID-19 than any other group, even though we are in a minority, which we talked about, the social determinants of health, and I know that that has a whole lot to do with the disparity that's going on. I know that this isn't going to last forever, but I'm really hoping that once this passes, that we don't just go back to business as usual, but that we can do a deeper dive to see what we can do as being part of a larger system to address some of these inequities. I've been talking about Pontiac, the people of Pontiac and mental health, especially the children of Pontiac with mental health, which is why I asked the question about children's services, because I personally don't feel that we have enough providers for the need. But that's for, a discussion for another day. I, I, I know that this is a difficult time, and difficult in many different ways, but I appreciate so much people's willingness to set themselves aside on behalf of others, and I see that on a large scale, and I'm so glad to see it, because it gives me hope that we are going to come out of this situation better people, and I hope we don't lose it once the crisis pass. So, yes, I'm able to meet at 4. Thank you to all the staff for everything that you do. I try to verbalize it as much as I possibly can, how much I appreciate the work that you do on our behalf, people receiving services, as well as the board. But we still have a lot of work to do. Sometimes I think when we congratulate ourselves, we don't always look at the areas that need more attention, and I really hope that we do that going forward. Thank you, and good night, and be safe, everybody.
Thank you. Mrs. Namie Dyer?
Yes, I just want to say thank you for this entire presentation. As a newer board member, this was really informative for me, and I'm really pleased to see all of the work that's being done towards, in particular, the value-based contracting, cultural competence services, and coordination of care. That's definitely a platform that I really highly support. And just as a provider who has had to shift towards telehealth at this time, I just want to offer my support that if, you know, I can be used as a resource in any way for some of our other providers, or anybody on the board, I am happy to do so. It's definitely been a challenge, but one that we have hopefully over, started to overcome a little bit, but I'm more than happy to provide support and resources in that way. And I am open to an earlier board meeting as well.
Thank you. Dr. Tom?
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay. 4 o'clock's fine with me also. Everybody said it, it can't be said enough. I think our staff and leadership, and the core providers and the direct care workers are awesome. And I did a comment on Boardable last week, I don't know if everybody saw it, but I'm just wondering if somehow we can find the time to point out to the legislature that if they had merged the funding streams like they say they're going to do, who would be, who would be doing this? Who would be looking out for the, do you think the Medicaid health plans have the infrastructure to do all this stuff? And, you know, I just think this might be a good time to point it out to them, that what our whole team is doing, and that it wouldn't be done if they give everything to the Medicaid health plans. And everybody keep safe. That's all.
Mr. Torres? I know Mr. Torres was, Mr. Torres, I know he was having issues before, I don't know if he's still on.
Oh, I'm here. Hello?
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. Okay. So, thank you. Yeah, I had a little bit of an issue for probably the 80% of the meeting, the slides weren't coming up, but I did follow your advice and went out and went back in, and it worked now. So, that's good. But I, one thing, the executive search, I was wondering if we could get a brief update on that at some point. I know that the interviews were canceled, the next round of interviews, but I haven't heard anything since then, so I wasn't sure if there was an update. Also, the point that was made about the racial inequities and that we're seeing in the healthcare by Malkaya, and I would agree with that, and the idea that one of the things that we've seen with COVID-19 is it's disproportionately affecting communities of color, disproportionately, number one, affecting African-American communities. Number two is the Latino, the Hispanic community, and we're seeing it more so in, you know, these lower socioeconomic areas, and such as Wayne County, where the hub of it is here in Michigan. So, if anything, I think it's something that has really shined a light on a lot of these healthcare inequities that we have in this country. The other point I had was, I know that when we're looking at the committees and the new board members and putting them into specific committees, I know Eric Lindmeyer had mentioned that he would be interested in either the two, and he seemed to have preference of business operations. I know we only had one seat on there. I am on business ops. I would be open to moving over to policy, so that Mr. Lindmeyer could sit on business ops. I know we do a lot of work in committee of the whole, you know, we're privy to a lot of the stuff anyways, but I know he has a particular interest in that arena, so I'd be willing to do that. And then, lastly, the, like Jonathan, it's a little tight for me doing later meeting. I'm still working from home, and then I'm also a teacher now as well, for my kindergarten, while my wife and I are taking shifts. So, but if you do start at 4, I may, I might make it at 4, but I'll likely be a little bit late. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Summers?
Hi. All the nice words, well-deserved, and can't be said enough. I agree that such extraordinary things have happened when extraordinary things are required. So, congratulations to everybody who's gone that second mile. For somebody else, certainly our staff, but I know that our board members do the same. We're all part of a community, and we all want to be as positive a force as we can be, in whatever way we can do it. So, thanks to everybody, I appreciate it. I'm always grateful that there are so many people who are willing to do so much beyond, above and beyond what is required of us. So, I appreciate you all, and I think that it looks like 4 o'clock will be our starting time, and we'll do our best to kind of front-load with less critical stuff when we put our agenda together, so that if things are missed, they may not be something that will be of high interest, or I shouldn't say high interest. It's all going to be wonderful, right? But will be, the more critical information will be lower on the agendas to make sure that everybody can, can get the key information that is going to be shared at the meeting. We can certainly do the election of the committee chairs and vice chairs, get that kind of housekeeping stuff out of the way, and then get down to the business, and that might allow Jonathan and John Paul to participate in the rest of the agenda. I know it's a challenge for everybody to try and make their time work, but I appreciate your effort. And with that, I thank you all, and if there are any other comments. And John Paul, if you and Eric want to discuss that, and you can let me know whether or not you want to make that switch prior to the board meeting, but I'll leave that to the two of you, okay?
Thank you.
Uh-huh, sure.
Judy, is Jonathan?
Yes.
Might I suggest that action item, items, votes, et cetera, be pushed to the later half of the agenda, then?
That's my point.
Well, you said something about committee chairs and other things, those are...
Well, those aren't elections, really. I mean, those are, you know, nominations, and we can take care of that if you have input. We can take care of that prior to the meeting, because it's really not an election, per se.
Okay. That's fine. Yes, I just...
Yes, we can, well...
Like John Paul, it's just, it's a struggle for some of us that are still full-time again.
I understand. I know that everybody's got a lot on their plate. There's no doubt in my mind. So, we'll do our best. When I see what the agenda items are, we'll try and arrange it in the way to have the most impactful items lower on the agenda, if that's possible, okay? But in terms of the chair and vice chair, we can do a lot of that preliminarily, because it isn't a true election, and the board only affirm the decision of the committees, okay?
Okay.
We'll figure it out. Okay, thanks. Anybody else have any other additional comments before we adjourn? Well, hearing none, I would adjourn this meeting. Thank you all for your effort. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.